Calling to order the Monday, March 4th, meeting of the 35th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Here.
Councilmember Edgar?
Here.
Councilmember Kadekko?
Here.
Councilmember Turbrack?
Here.
And Mayor O'Dwyer?
Here.
The first order of business is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve tonight's agenda.
Moved to approve by Councilmember Kadekko. Support by Councilmember Blanchard. Are there any additions, changes? Hearing seeing none. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blanchard?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Councilmember Kadekko?
Yes.
Councilmember Turbrack?
Yes.
And Mayor O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, would you please stand for the invocation? We have Majid Steve Klepper here with us.
From Psalm 90, may the Holy One of blessing bring blessing to the work of our hands. We ask God's grace and wisdom as we go about the work of governance and administration, so that by our labors we continue to make the world a place of justice, a place of compassion, and a place of peace. Together we say, "Amen."
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we come to the Citizens' Comments portion of tonight's meeting, where you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, please sign your name provided at the clerk's table. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence.
Hi, good evening. My name is Judy Rubin. I live in Huntington Woods. I'm the Executive Director of the Tri-Community Coalition, which is a substance abuse prevention nonprofit for Berkeley, Huntington Woods, and Oak Park. We are a resource for all three communities, and I want to thank you as usual for your support. And I want to share with you three things. The first is to thank Mayor O'Dwyer and Mayor Protem Turbrack and Councilman Kadekko and Councilman Blanchard, and the Library Director, Matt Church, and Sergeant Andrew Hadfield from Public Safety, from Berkeley Public Safety, for all participating in last week's prescription drug abuse call to action. And we had a wonderful panel discussion. It was videotaped. We had a nice turnout, but the information is so important, I'm so happy that it will be disseminated through the cable stations, and I'm very excited about that. Matt Church also as the Director was our co-sponsor of the event, and he's just done wonderful things in my book for the library and welcoming us and giving us kind of free rein, so I thank you all for that. That was my number-one item. Second item is that on Wednesday night, March 5th, that's two nights from now, we have our Night Court, and this is our third annual Night Court, and we have our 345 district judges who will be presiding over at the Oak Park District Court: Judge Apple, Judge Gubo, and Judge Wittenberg. And we strongly suggest that parents come with their teens to learn about drugs and alcohol and the cost of that usage, if it should be. And they're also including violence, because they've seen a little bit of violence in the areas, and it's a real learning experience. You can actually hear gasps in the room when Judge Wittenberg has said, "It's about $10,000 for a DUI," and there's just this audible, like, "Ugh." It's shocking. And it's a wonderful educational evening. It's 7 o'clock at 45 District Court in Oak Park. So that's for our viewing audience. And the third reason I've come before you is to share with you an opportunity to participate in our March fundraiser. It's a comedy event. It is March 30th, 7 o'clock. It's on a Sunday night, and Councilman Kadekko has agreed to help me sell out in Berkeley. And so you can visit our website, which is www.tricommunitycoalition.org. There's a PayPal there. You can pay online. You can see me. My email is right on the website. Or please see Councilman Kadekko. He has the tickets in his pocket. They are $20. And think of it as saving lives whenever you support the Coalition, because really, that's what you do. We like to think of ourselves as saving kids' lives in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else coming to the microphone, then we will move on to the Consent Agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Minutes, matter of approving Minutes of regular 35th City Council Meeting of February 3rd, 2014. Warrant, matter of approving warrant number 1275, and Proclamation P214, matter of adopting a proclamation recognizing March 2014 as Parenting Awareness Month in the City of Berkeley.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Baker. Support by Councilmember Blanchard. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Councilmember Kadekko?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Turbrack?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
And Councilmember Blanchard?
Yes.
And Mayor O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now we move on to the Regular Agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number one on tonight's Regular Agenda?
Recognizations, Presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the Consent Agenda.
I have asked Councilmember Blanchard to read Proclamation 214.
Thank you, Your Honor. A proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley recognizing Parenting Awareness Month, whereas the most precious and valuable asset to our city is our children and the future of our society depends largely on the emotional, social, physical, and intellectual growth of these most cherished individuals, and whereas the City of Berkeley relies on parents to protect their children and teach them the importance of honesty, respect, education, empathy, service, and determination, and whereas the parents who nurture, love, and guide their children help them develop into healthy, loving, responsible, and contributing citizens, and whereas the effect of parenting adds stability and strength to the lives of the children and also helps to reduce social issues such as substance abuse, school failure, teenage pregnancy, violence, and crime, and whereas providing and promoting parenting education and resources for the development of parenting skills will greatly contribute toward improving the quality of life for Berkeley's families, and whereas during this month we join with the Michigan Department of Community Health to encourage parents to join parent networks and become more involved in the lives of their children. Now, therefore, the City of Berkeley resolves Section 1 that the Berkeley City Council officially proclaims the month of March 2014 to be Parenting Awareness Month in the City of Berkeley, proclaims its third day of March 2014 at a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Berkeley. Mayor Phil O'Dwyer.
Thank you.
And now I'd like to call up to the microphone a member of the Parenting Awareness Michigan Steering Committee.
What's her name? We'd like to... Councilmember Blanchard, would you share the name of the person coming to the microphone?
That would be Barbara Blanchard.
Thank you, okay. First of all, thank you for doing this proclamation. March has been designated as Parenting Awareness Month for over 20 years, so it's something that is a tried and true, you know, tradition, and we're very happy to have Berkeley become part of that. I represent Michigan PTA on the PAM Committee, which is Parenting Awareness Michigan. Our national organization is Prevention Network, might be more of a name that you've heard before, but your proclamation... I'll read all of my notes. Your proclamation does help to draw public attention to the critical importance of effective and informed parenting. Many organizations do offer resources during the month of March, so we really are hoping that parents will take the time to take a look at all of the organizations around Berkeley and around Michigan that offer parenting resources and take them to heart and really use them to get a better connection with their children. So, thank you again, and I hope that we have other communities join you in this proclamation.
Thank you very much. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number two on tonight's agenda?
Public Hearing, matter of conducting a public hearing to receive comments on the proposed conversion and mitigation proposal for the Oxford Park property and community park.
Is there a motion to approve the public hearing? Motion to approve? Motion to approve by Councilmember Redgar. Support by Councilmember Kadekko. Ms. Sessa.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and to members of the public. At this time, we are simply asking for a comment from our residents regarding this issue. It is a public hearing, and it is open to anyone who's interested in commenting about this land that the City of Berkeley is interested in acquiring. Mr. Mayor, if I can be so bold here?
Sure.
Either we can ask the residents or interested persons to come up and speak, or if you'd like, I do have our Director of Parks and Recreation ready to come up and give us a brief summary of what this land is all about and how we intend to utilize it and its purpose.
I think that would be the best way to proceed.
Very good, sir.
To have our Director come forward and explain what's happening, and then the public can respond to that or react to it.
Mr. Caldwell, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. We've talked about this a few times, and it's still very exciting. Adding almost three acres of parkland to the green space we have in the community is certainly something to get excited about. So we've talked about it a few times. For those people in the audience and people that are watching, you know, I'll walk through really quick where we're at, and we can go from there. So, Community Park was partially developed through grants that we received through the Michigan Department of Natural Resources, the DNR. In 2004, when we added the cell phone tower over at Community Park, we essentially turned what was parkland into revenue generating land, and we converted that land. So, when we talk about the conversion aspect of what we're trying to do, the converted land is Community Park. You know, as we look at the Oxford property, you know, the purchase and turning it into green space, those aren't the only main benefits behind acquiring that land. What we can do is use the Oxford property as mitigated land or replacement land for the Community Park property. This will help us in a number of different ways. Obviously, we get, you know, more green space, but if we are successful in our effort to use that space as mitigated land, that will help us in our grant-writing possibilities in the future. We've been working with the DNR to complete a number of steps. The first set of objectives was basically looking at proving that the Oxford property was eligible, was eligible to be mitigation land, and so we had to prove that it wasn't currently in public ownership. That was one. That it has a high level of recreation usefulness. We can use it as a park, and we can use it for a number of great things. That its use was on a casual and infrequent basis for recreation. And then the other one was that the land needed to be adjacent. Now, obviously, it's not adjacent property, but when we were able to speak with the DNR, we were able to prove that the usefulness of this land and adding three acres of green space to the City of Berkeley, they agreed with us, and they allowed us to move forward to the next step, which was ultimately to prove that this land is safe. So, we're currently undergoing a number of steps. The do-care obligations and environmental review, that is currently happening, and that's, again, you know, kids playing in the, you know, in the soil and the grass. We want to make sure that there's no contaminants. We have to undergo an appraisal. The mitigated land needs to be worth more than the converted land. And then we need a no-effect letter from the State Historic Preservation Office, just so we're making sure that by us purchasing that land and turn it into a park, we're not affecting any of the great history from the great state of Michigan or the wonderful city of Berkeley. And then finally, is to hold a public review and let the community weigh in. Like we said, the property is just under three acres, and there is a lot of very exciting possibilities with what we can do. There are no concrete plans with what we would intend to do with the space, but there certainly would be a planning process that would include input from the community. So, that's where we're at, and we hope that we'll be able to turn our packet into the Michigan Department of Natural Resources in the next couple of weeks.
Very good. Thank you for that summary. Now, are there any members of the public wish to comment on this property?
Good evening, City Council. My name's Mike Kirby. I'm the Chairman of the Parks and Rec Board. Just wanted to come up here and thank everybody for getting this done here, getting us the property. I'd like to thank the School Board, too, for getting involved and helping us acquire this. I think it's good for all the kids going to the schools. It's good for all the residents. It's good for our property values, and it's great for the city. Just wanted to say thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike. Any comments from members of the council? Well, I'd like to thank all of you, and I'd like to thank Tom for doing a wonderful job and his entire team, the Parks and Rec Department as well, and the Advisory Board for Parks and Rec. Everybody along the line has worked collaboratively to make this happen, and we're thankful that this is proceeding along the lines that we had hoped. So with that thought, then we will close the Public Hearing section, and Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number three on tonight's agenda?
Resolution Number R614, matter of approving a resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, establishing ad hoc Woodward Dream Cruise Committee coordinating the 2014 Dream Cruise Event for the City of Berkeley.
Is there a motion to approve R614?
Move to approve R614.
Move to approve by Councilmember Kadekko, with support by Councilmember Blanchard. Ms. Sessa?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Under this item, we're simply asking the City Council to begin appointing some of the key individuals that are... well, that will be working and that are currently working, I should say, on this project. Now, it's not to say, as you can see, there's still quite a few people that still need to be appointed, and there are some individuals that have asked to be considered, but at this time, excuse me, I thought I would just simply start with the staff, and then the next month I will come back and fill it up with the other appointees.
Okay. And so, then, everybody has before them the slate of people who are... shall I read them just to...
Excuse me.
...for the sake of everybody at home. Non-voting member, the mayor. One councilmember, non-voting, Alan Kadekko. City manager, non-voting member, Jane Bysta Sessa. One representative, the Recreation Department, Tom Caldwell. One member of the Public Safety Department, Ray Eschman. One representative of the Public Works Department, Sean Young. One parade coordinator, Robert North. And the ongoing chairman and representative of Berkeley Business, Mark Coon. So, that is the lineup. Are there any questions, discussion on this slate of folks? Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Kadekko?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Turbrack?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
And Mayor O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number four?
Motion Number M814, approve the application by Blarney Stone Pub, 27253 Woodward Avenue, for temporary authorization of outdoor alcohol sales, subject to the approval of Liquor Control Commission, from noon on Saturday, March 15, 2014, to 1 a.m. on Sunday, March 16, 2014, and from noon on Sunday, March 16, 2014, to 1 a.m. on Monday, March 17, 2014, and from noon on Monday, March 17, 2014, to 1 a.m. on Tuesday, March 18, 2014, in the applied for extended area.
Is there a motion to approve M814?
Motion to approve M814?
Moved to approve by Mayor Protem Turbrack. Support by Councilmember Edgar. Ms. Sessa?
Council, I really do not have too much more to add than what the city clerk explained. The only thing that I would like to state for the City Council is that this matter has been reviewed by our Public Safety Department, and they will work very closely with this... with Ms. Payne in order to ensure that this is followed closely. I know that we've had some concerns in the past, and Public Safety is working very closely with them so that they can address any concerns that some of the residents may have in that area.
Very good. Is there any discussion on this item? Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. My biggest concern right now is going to be parking, because we've got a tremendous amount of snow. It's lining the streets, and we're going to have to be very careful and possibly restrict parking to only one side of the street, or we won't be able to get emergency vehicles through. So there's a serious concern there that has to be looked at, and I'm sure that Public Safety will look at that.
Definitely.
My understand... Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor, and I echo my colleague's comments. It's actually a part of the conversations that I've had over the past few days with our excellent representatives from Public Safety Department. As you know, they have tremendous services that they provide, and we sure hope we don't need their services, but if we do, I've been assured that they'll work to make the fire lane on the south side of the street, so that it'll be safe for the residents to hopefully not need those services.
Ms. Sessa?
I know, it looks like our chief may have something to comment on this. Chief Eschman?
Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, are there any questions for the chief? We're discussing the whole question of parking and vehicles being able to get down, ambulances and fire trucks and so on, in view of the snow that jams things up. The street is narrow to begin with, and now this complicates the picture a little bit.
Yes, we're considering closing parking on the south side, which is the fire lane.
Yes.
From Stanford to Woodward.
Mm-hmm.
That should alleviate the problem of the emergency service vehicles being able to access either direction. We're also considering on Saturday night and Sunday night, limiting the hours, as opposed to 1 o'clock in the morning, closing the tent down 10, but not on Monday. We have the regular hours on Monday, so that's still in the works.
So, if we approve this tonight, it'll be approved till 1 a.m.
Right.
Pending any modification that Public Safety might introduce.
Yes. We're reaching agreement on adjusting those hours.
Okay. Councilmember Redgar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to voice my concern, too, based on the drawing here. It looks like the tent is in their parking lot.
Yes.
So, if we're going to condense parking in their parking lot to virtually nothing, and you are blocking off one side of the street, are they going to be forced or feel the necessity to park across Woodward and imperadly?
Hopefully, no one will be impaired.
Hopefully, we can hope.
To the point where they can't walk across the road, but that's always a possibility.
So, is there something?
Not just on this day, but any day.
Any day, yes.
They will still have one parking lot open. This is the parking lot on the south side to be blocked.
Right, there's another parking lot.
On the north side. The smaller of the two, yeah.
Except going down Columbia, we've never had any real issues with the parking.
Very good. Any additional discussion, then? We have resident who wants to make a comment.
Good evening. My name's Chris Pfeifer. I live at 738 Columbia, which is across the street and two doors down from the Blarney Stone. We, in the neighborhood, have an annual love-hate relationship with parking on this day, because it essentially... even on a good weather day, you get cars that are parked very tight, and they're parked on both sides of the street. So essentially, what you end up doing, even on a good day, is, you know, picking and choosing your lanes and having to wait, and it kind of becomes the game of chicken, essentially. With the snowbanks the way they are now, I would really like you guys to consider, please, doing the fire lane, because it would help, especially on a three-day stretch, as this is. My thoughts on your concern with the tent where the parking is, there's actually, I want to say there's six or eight parking spots there where the tent's actually going to take up, so I think the impact is minimal in that regard. So, I just would ask you guys to please take that into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Very good. Seeing no additional comments. Oh, there's one more coming.
My name is Michael Cameron, and I live at 724 Columbia, which is adjacent to the Blarney Stone. What Chris said about the parking, I agree with completely, and I hope that you do indeed block off the one lane on Columbia. The other thing I'd like to mention or ask about is noise restriction. If these folks are going to be open until 1 o'clock, are they going to be playing music outside until 1 o'clock? And I would hope that you would, even if you do allow them to stay open later, that maybe you can have the music stop at 10 or 11, just so that, you know, I can go to bed. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We've had that discussion with the representatives from the Blarney Stone, and we'll continue to, and we'll try to... we will monitor it, and we'll try to calm it down at 10 o'clock.
Very good.
On the Monday night. But it'll be closed at 10, we believe, on both Saturday and Sunday already, so...
And the safety in the street, you know, that will make a big difference, I think.
Yes.
It will make a big difference to the residents.
Yes.
And their ongoing safety.
Yes.
So I certainly appreciate that that is being included.
Thank you.
Seeing no additional comments, then, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M814?
Mayor Protem Turbrack?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Councilmember Kadekko?
Yes.
And Mayor O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number five?
Ordinance Number 0114, matter of approving the first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 82, offenses and miscellaneous provisions, Article 5, offenses against public peace, Section 82-151, disorderly persons of the City of Berkeley City Code to repeal their prohibition of begging in public places, set date certain March 17, 2013.
Is there a motion to approve 0114?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Kadekko. Ms. Sessa?
Mr. Mayor and City Council, I know that our city attorney has discussed this matter with us in the past, and he has indicated that he is wanting us to address this issue. You have received some information from him, letters explaining the case law behind this, and I hope you received the most recent update that we got as well, so that you can read the whole case. But our other attorney as well, Mr. Dan Christ is here as well to explain a little background on this matter and why it is important that we consider the passage of this item. Mr. Christ?
Mr. Attorney? Thank you, Mayor and Council. Section 82-151 of the Berkeley Code of Ordinances provides a number of items that are prohibited that constitute a disorderly person, and one of those provisions adopts the Michigan anti-begging statute, which provides that begging in a public place is prohibited. Last year, 2013, the Michigan... well, last year, 2013, the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals considered a case in Michigan where the panel determined that the Michigan anti-begging statute was invalid, facially invalid on its face, and based on essentially a First Amendment issue. The proposed ordinance before you this evening for its first reading would delete that particular language. evening, uh, for its first reading, would, uh, delete that particular language of the, uh, anti-begging provision, uh, to make it conform to, uh, what is binding law, uh, on the City of Berkeley. Uh, so it is certainly our, uh, opinion and recommendation that, uh, council, uh, adopt, uh, and approve this proposed amendment.
So fundamentally, what you're saying is you're bringing us into compliance with Michigan law?
Correct. And, and actually, not just Michigan law, but, uh, federal law as well.
Very good. Are there any questions for our attorney? It's self-evident, it seems to me.
Pretty simple.
And seeing no, uh, comments coming, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on ordinance one fourteen?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Councilmember Kadakel?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Terbrecht?
Yes.
And Mayor O'Dwyer.
Yes. And now we come to the communications portion of tonight's meeting, and Councilmember Blanchard should be first.
Well, uh, the one first thing I want to say is, just remember there's only seventeen days till spring.
[laughing]
I don't know what that means for sure, but we may still be up to our knees in snow, but it's only seventeen days. And I know Councilwoman Kadakel will be able to tell you how many days till opening day. Uh, wanna remind everybody that, uh, next Saturday, or correction, Saturday the fifteenth, ten to four is the Berkeley Home Expo, so hope to see a lot of people there. Uh, I wanna thank the Public Safety Department, and I wanna thank all of our surrounding communities who came to our aid, uh, Saturday morning. For those of you who don't know, we had a fire on Rosemont, and, uh, we've been doing a lot of training with our fire department, our Public Safety Department, and it worked well. Our surrounding communities that responded to us, trucks came, parked where they were supposed to park, the incident commander was, command was set up, everything flowed the way it was supposed to flow, the fire was put out, and there were no injuries, although it was close, 'cause it was pretty slippery out there. We were slipping and sliding around on the ice on the street. But, uh, it all went well. Public Safety did a wonderful, wonderful job, and so did all of our mutual aid partners. I'd also like to thank DPW for their outstanding work so far this winter in keeping our streets clean. I know there are people that are complaining. Uh, I think they're still doing a wonderful job. They're getting the snow off the streets. Uh, sometimes they're getting it in your driveway, and you may have to live with that, but, uh, we're getting the streets open. And considering the fact that we've had seventeen water main breaks so far this year, uh, we're normally, a normal year, for the whole year, we have fifteen. Uh, I think they're doing an outstanding job, so I'd like to thank them.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, a couple of quick things. I'd like to extend my gratitude to, uh, Library Director Matt Church. Uh, he invited me to speak at, uh, today's Berkeley Rotary Club. It was my first time attending one of their events other than the pancake breakfast, so it was, uh, nice to actually be a part of one of their sessions. And, and we spoke about regional transit, mass transit along Woodward Avenue, and it was a great conversation, very engaging dialogue, good questions, good comments, good feedback about the kinds of options and, and opportunities we have as a region to move forward. Um, our study along Woodward Avenue is actually nearing completion. Uh, and for, uh, many of those who've been, uh, active followers and, and participants in the process know that we've had, uh, four, um, community hearings, four open houses, over the past year and a half, where folks have come in and given their opinions and, and feedback on the designs. And we are nearing what's called a locally preferred alternative, locally preferred alternative. That's a, that's a, um, a series of configurations in terms of where the stations may be, and what the, how the lanes are configured, uh, for a, for a transit system in our area. And, uh, and that's an exciting milestone for us here on Woodward Avenue. Uh, we are the first in, in our four-county area here as part of the Regional Transit Authority to, to make it this far, um, down the road of, um, establishing a transit, um, schematic, if you will, a plan or an approach. Uh, and we are setting, um, the benchmark, we're setting the precedence for, for, um, subsequent communities to help, uh, be a part of transit conversations around, around the state. Uh, so that's, uh, that's great, and again, thank, thanks to, uh, to Mr. Church for that opportunity. Now, it was Dennis Waitley who once said, "Don't dwell on what went wrong. Instead, focus on what to do next. Spend your energies on moving forward toward finding the answer." And again, that's, "Don't dwell on what went wrong. Instead, focus on what to do next. Spend your energies on moving forward toward finding the answer." Now, I offer that with some hesitation here as I briefly talk about the, um, the governor's recent budget proposal. As I mentioned in our last meeting, uh, it was, it was announced on, um, Wednesday, February fifth, uh, the governor's, uh, proposed budget. And, uh, something that actually is a slight turn in the, in the right direction is a recommended, um, fifteen percent increase in, in revenue, um, uh, in statutory revenue sharing, uh, for the communities. And, uh, fifteen percent sounds like, sounds like a lot. That sounds like a really good thing. And, uh, it is, because at least it's, it's in the right direction for the first time in a very long time. Um, it's been, uh, it's interesting to think about that fifteen percent, if it were to work its way through the entire process, uh, would amount to about thirty-six million, uh, for local communities, which again, sounds like a lot, you know, until you start to spread it across the state. And then you realize that that thirty-six million is actually just a rounding error on the six billion with a B, six billion dollars that has been taken away over the last, uh, many years. So, um, so again, you know, I'm happy for the, you know, at least it's in the positive direction, and I choose to celebrate that, uh, as best as we can. Uh, and there's lots of other, uh, opportunities in that budget. It doesn't, uh, meaningfully address any transit issues, um, infrastructure. There's conversations going on now between the states and the, uh, or the Senate and the House, uh, in terms of like some emergency repair funds for the potholes and things like that, but, uh, uh, nothing, uh, sustainable, just putting a little wet patch on top of those things, so it doesn't really help us in the long term. So, uh, we still have some, uh, some pressing long-term issues to deal with, but, uh, but again, it's, uh, it's a small little thing, and it, well, at least it's a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Councilmen. Men of optimism. And now we turn to the Mayor Pro Tim, Dan Terbrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a couple of quick things. First, I want to, uh, thank all the members of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board and the Parks and Rec Department that are here tonight, um, in support of the, uh, public hearing that we had earlier regarding the mitigating land, uh, for, or at Oxford Park, um, at Merchant Park now. Uh, that is critically important, um, for, for the city for the reasons that Mr. Caldwell, uh, expressed earlier. I did not want to say anything during the public hearing because that is a public hearing, and, and you can hear me talk right now. Um, but it is very important, uh, mitigating that property is very important. One, we are lacking in green space in the city. Being able to acquire that land and work with the district, uh, as we were able to, um, is beneficial for all parties involved, and mostly it's beneficial for the residents, especially those in that area that have not had access to parkland, uh, for quite some time. Uh, and not to mention the fact that it will allow us to continue to apply for DNR grants and other grants, so it's a very important step. I was pleased to have so many people turn out. Um, you weren't all, your voices weren't all needed, uh, but we know that you're here in spirit, and we certainly, uh, appreciate you. And finally, I want to congratulate the Berkeley-Ferndale United Hockey Team, Coach Jeff Fleming, um, Alex Rollick, who's one of the captains, a young, young gentleman I know, and, uh, the rest of the players on advancing to the Division Two State Quarterfinals for the first time in program history. Uh, it's been a very impressive year, uh, for the squad. They moved up to a tougher division. That did not stop them at all, um, and they've advanced farther than they have. So again, congratulations to the players and to Coach Fleming, uh, who has really built a very strong hockey culture, not just with the high school team, but everything that he's done at the arena, uh, with youth hockey and his involvement in, in getting other teams at the arena. So, um, I just want to make sure that, uh, I certainly congratulate all of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Edgar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I was able to attend, uh, the Planning Commission meeting this past, um, time that they met, and this was my first. I don't know if all of you tuned in last, uh, meeting, but I was put on the Planning Commission and the Tree Commission and the Environmental Commission. Um, so I was delighted to be there. I want to say how pleased I was at how diligent and thoughtful their consideration was in so many areas, the, uh, of citizen concern, the bike routes, the signage, um, many of the different concerns that they addressed over the meeting. I also wanted to congratulate Amy Vansen and Derek Schuler for the MML recognition at the Silver Level for, and our environmental leadership. Um, we are part of Michigan's Green Communities Conference, and we were awarded the Silver Level there, and that's pretty impressive. Um, also, Amy had been working on something on Robina, and that initially looked like it had fallen through, and it came through, which is a wonderful thing. Um, I think she's pretty impressive. And I also want to, um, second, Councilmember Blanchard's invitation to the Home Expo on March fifteenth, from ten to four at Berkeley High School. It's on the webpage, and there's some wonderful exhibitors there. I think it's probably gonna be a pretty exciting event. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Kadakel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Blanchard, twenty-eight days from today. Um, so, spring is in the air. Uh, first of all, earlier we saw Judy Rubin, the Executive Director from Tri-Community Coalition, and she spoke about Comedy Night, which is a lot of fun. Um, the, the program that they had, uh, the other evening that she spoke about with the prescription drug, uh, was more than interesting, and I'm really happy I attended that. But last month, they had Dialogue Day, and once again, it was superb. Um, this is where students came from Berkeley High and the two Oak Park Schools, and they had Dr. Michael Fallon, uh, once again, as the presenter, and it really touches the kids' hearts when he speaks, and, and I want to thank them for that program. Um, there's a gentleman in this city, his name is Warren Beer, and he used to go around and say, "No one likes a Warren Beer." And, uh, if you ever went to Alex's, you would see him, and, uh, I'm saddened to say that I was speaking to the chief earlier today, and he told me that Mr. Beer passed away this morning, so my condolences go out to the entire Beer family. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Um, Ms. DeSessa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief. As you can see, I have a bit of a cold, so I'm struggling as I speak here. Um, I too want to thank the, uh, Parks and Recreation, um, Advisory Committee for attending their meeting this evening. It's very important. Your support means a lot to us, and I'm looking very, I know the, uh, I'm looking forward to working with all of you. I know that the, uh, uh, Director of Parks and Recreation, Mr. Caldwell, knows how excited I am about, uh, the acquisition of this land. It is something that our City Council has been working on for many, many years, and so to see it now getting closer and closer, um, I'm, I'm very excited. It's, it'll be the first time that something like this will, will be added to our community. So, I look forward to working with you all on that. You know, last week, or last month, I mentioned that our city had, uh, received, uh, recognition in terms of being the fifth most safest city in, uh, in Michigan, which I'm very, very proud of. Our Public Safety Department, uh, they work very hard, uh, to make sure that, that we're all safe. Uh, and recently, in, uh, on a website, it's called Safe Wise, they, uh, they list us, and they show our, our, they, they show our recognition, and they, they tell people that are interested from all over the world to come to Berkeley, Michigan, and to live here. But, um, they also noted that, uh, the Realtor Caldwell Banker ranked the City of Berkeley as the twelfth best place in the state of Michigan to live. So I think that's an awesome recognition as well, and I'm very, very proud. I, I think this says a lot about our community, our people, and, uh, and how much we care about our community. So, I'm very happy about that. So, congratulations to our city, and, uh, and we'll continue to work hard to provide as best services as we can. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Sabuda?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have nothing this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. It's very nice to be here with council. Uh, there are a couple of matters, both from a state and federal, uh, standpoint, cases that impact on local government. Uh, I don't want to brief council on those this evening, but we will be, uh, continuing to monitor those, and either John Staran or I will be providing a communication to council on those issues. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. I would like to take us back to the proclamation that was read by Councilmember Blanchard about the importance of parenting. And, uh, when that, uh, proclamation was presented to Barbara Blanchard, she used this expression, "Effective and informed parenting." It's critically important for all of us to understand that parenting, uh, very often depends on information, knowledge, using resources that are available in the community. And so for any parents who are having difficulties, challenges, uh, in the, um, delivery of that critical role in our world, the role of parenting, don't be afraid to come forward and embrace the, um, support systems that are available, uh, the counseling that is available. We had Judy Rubin here from the Tri-Community Coalition, and all of the groups that, uh, all understand the importance of parenting for all our future, for the future. It, it is nice to hear, um, our city manager talking about all the accolades the city gets. And those accolades depend upon the quality, actually, of the parenting and the education and the family spirit and the collaboration and volunteerism. It's so much part of Berkeley. We see it now with the snow. Councilwoman Blanchard talked about the snow. So many people, um, helping their neighbors, characteristic, uh, Berkeley neighborliness being expressed, and we're all proud of that. That's what makes our community a great community. And on that note, uh, Ms. Boucher, would you please, um, you know, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Support.
Uh, move by Councilmember Kadakel, support by Councilmember Blake Baker. Mister, um, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blanchard?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Councilmember Kadakel?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Terbrecht?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
And Mayor O'Dwyer.
Yes. March fourth meeting is adjourned. Thank you.